Good evening, welcome to the Wednesday, July 6, 2022, meeting of the Chappaqua Central School District Board of Education. The board has been an executive session since 6:30. It is now 7:32. Can I have a motion to reopen the public meeting?
I move.
I move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay.
I'd like to introduce to the open office to Hillary Grasso and Ryan Kelsey, my newly-elected board members, who are already sworn in, sorry, who are already sworn in on first. So is it just a public vote? So, Ryan, if you would please stand. And Hillary, if you would start, reading, just read the script there, please.
Sure. I, Hillary Grasso, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Board Member of the Chappaqua Central School District according to the best of my ability.
Ryan?
I, Ryan Kelsey, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Board Member of the Chappaqua Central School District according to the best of my ability.
Very good. Dr. Ackerman?
I, Christine Ackerman, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Superintendent of the Chappaqua Central School District according to the best of my ability.
Thank you all. Do we, does Lisa need to be?
I come after, after the president, the vice presidential morning.
Okay. So, okay, hold on. Congratulations, Ryan. Congratulations, Hillary. Welcome, welcome back and welcome.
Okay, so I move that Jane Camilla Shepherdson be elected President of the Board of Education of the Chappaqua Central School District for the 2022-2023 school year.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
I move that Warren Messner be appointed to serve as Vice President of the Board of Education of the Chappaqua Central School District for the 2022-2023 school year. He shall have the power to exercise the duties of the President in case of absence or disability of the President. In the absence of both the President and the Vice President, I, Hillary Grasso, am authorized to act in the capacity of President.
I second the motion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Jane, if you would please stand. I review.
I, Jane Camilla Shepherdson, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Board Member of the Board of Education of the Chappaqua Central School District according to the best of my ability.
Thank you. Warren?
I, Warren Messner, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Vice President of the Board of Education of the Chappaqua Central School District according to the best of my ability.
Thank you. Now we play musical charts, right?
Yep.
So, do I?
You go in there, you and Ryan switch.
Congratulations to Warren and Jane.
All right, back together again, me and Warren.
Okay.
We've been here before.
We have been here before, okay. May I have a motion for school district clerk?
I move that Lisa Elzer be appointed School District Clerk of the Chappaqua Central School District for the 2022-2023 school year.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Please stand, Lisa.
I, Lisa Elsner, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of District Clerk of the Chappaqua Central School District according to the best of my ability.
Yay, Lisa.
May I have a motion for school district treasurer?
I move that Kathleen Lynch be appointed School District Treasurer of Chappaqua Central School District for the 22-23 school year.
I second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. May I have a motion for school district deputy treasurer?
I move that Andrew Lennon be appointed School District Deputy Treasurer of Chappaqua Central School District for the year 22-23 school year.
I second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. May I have a motion for central treasurer Extracurricular Activity Fund?
I move that Kathleen Lynch be appointed Central Treasurer Extracurricular Activity Fund of the Chappaqua Central School District for the 2022-2023 school year.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. May I have a motion for attendance officer, officers, excuse me?
I move that building administrators or the designees shall be appointed attendance officers for the 2022-2023 school year.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. May I have a motion for asbestos management plan designee?
I move that Joseph Gromando be appointed Asbestos Management Plan Designee for the 2022-23 school year.
I second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. May I have a motion for claims auditor?
I move that Jonathan Ross shall be appointed Claims Auditor for the 2022-23 school year.
I second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. May I have a motion for chief emergency officer and co-chief emergency officer?
I move that Joe Gromando be appointed Chief Emergency Officer and that Andrew Lennon be appointed Co-Chief Emergency Officer for the 2022-2023 school year.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. May I have a motion for 504 compliance officers/Title II ADA compliance officers?
I move that the Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources and Jamie Edelman be appointed 504 Title II ADA compliance officers for the 2022-2023 school year.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. May I have a motion for Student Disability Discrimination Compliance Coordinators?
I move that the Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources and Jamie Edelman be appointed Student Disability Discrimination Compliance Coordinators for the 2022-23 school year.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. May I have a motion to appoint members of the Committee on Special Education and Preschool Special Education?
I move that the individuals listed on the attached memo from Jamie Edelman and Karen Smith be appointed to the Committees on Special Education and Preschool Special Education for the 2022-2023 school year.
I second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. May I have a motion to appoint McKinney-Vento homeless liaisons?
I move that Lisa Basiglià and Jamie Edelman be appointed McKinney-Vento homeless liaisons for the Chappaqua Central School District for the 2022-2023 school year.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. May I have a motion to appoint the rotational list of impartial hearing officers as determined by New York State Department of Education for the 2022-2023 school year?
I move that the rotational list of impartial hearing officers as determined by the New York State Department of Education be appointed for the 2022-23 school year. The list shall also include the names of other certified impartial hearing officers requested to serve in the district. Impartial hearing officers shall be selected, appointed, and compensated in accordance with Policy 3030.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. May I have a motion for Medicaid compliance officers?
I move that the Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources and Jamie Edelman be appointed Medicaid compliance officers for the 2022-23 school year.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. May I have a motion for payroll certification officers?
I move that the Andrew Lennon and the Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources be appointed Payroll Certification Officers of Chappaqua Central School District for the 2022-23 school year.
I second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. May I have a motion for property control manager?
I move that Michael Trinick be appointed Property Control Manager of the Chappaqua Central School District for the 2022-2023 school year.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. May I have a motion for purchasing agent?
I move that Michael Trinick be appointed Purchasing Agent for the 2022-2023 school year.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. May I have a motion for records management and access officer?
I move that Andrew Lennon be appointed Records Management and Access Officer of Chappaqua Central School District for the 2022-23 school year.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. May I have a motion for appointment of school district attorney?
I move that the firm of Shaw-Purcell May &amp; Lambert LLP be appointed School District Attorney of Chappaqua Central School District for the 2022-23 school year.
I second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. May I have a motion for appointment of school district independent auditor?
I move that the firm of PKF O'Connor-Davies be appointed as School District Independent Auditors of the Chappaqua Central School District for the 2022-2023 school year.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. May I have a motion for community members of the audit committee?
I move to appoint Alan Rosen and Christopher Dalrymple as community members of the audit committee.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. May I have a motion for appointment of school district bond counsel?
I move that the firm of Hawkins, Dellafield, and Wood LLP be appointed as School District Bond Counsel of the Chappaqua Central School District for the 2022-23 school year.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. May I have a motion for appointment of school district fiscal advisor?
I move that the firm of Bernard P. Donigan INC. be appointed as School District Fiscal Advisor of the Chappaqua Central School District for the 2022-23 school year.
I second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. May I have a motion for surrogate parent as required by CSE/CPSE guidelines?
I move that Amy Ancel be appointed as surrogate parent of the Chappaqua Central School District for the 2022-2023 school year as required by the CSE/CPSE guidelines.
I move, I have a second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. May I have a motion for district Title IX coordinators?
I move that the Horace Greeley High School Principal, Jeff Curtis, Joseph Mazza, Carol Bartlick, Tanya Wilson, and James Scoog be appointed district Title IX coordinators for the 2022-2023 school year.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. May I have a motion for district Title IX investigators?
I move that Philip Marcus and Jamie Edelman be appointed district Title IX investigators for the 2022-23 school year.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. May I have a motion for district Title IX decision makers?
I move that the Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources and Jamie Edelman be appointed district Title IX decision makers for the 2022-23 school year.
I second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. May I have a motion for Title VI and Title VII compliance officers?
I move that the Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources and Jamie Edelman be appointed Title VI and Title VII compliance officers for the 2022-23 school year.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. May I have a motion for DASA coordinators?
I move that the Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources, Jamie Edelman, the Horace Greeley High School Principal, Cisco Bersherd, Ron Gamma, Ronald Gamma, Laurel Lynn Stewart, Jeffrey Curtis, Jennifer Keen Thompson, Joseph Mazza, Jessica Rappaport, Deborah Alsbach, Ryan Spillane, Tanya Wilson, Ross Cooper, James Scoog, and Alyssa Stover be appointed DASA coordinators for the 2022-2023 school year.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. May I have a motion for depositories?
I move that Bank of New York, JP Morgan Chase, Bank of America, Commerce Bank, M&amp;T Bank, TD Bank, BNY Mellon, Signature Bank, People's United Bank, New York Class NYLAF designated as depositories for the funds of Chappaqua Central School District for the 2022-23 school year, beginning July 1, 2022, and ending June 30, 2023.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. May I have a motion for investments?
I move that Kathleen Lynch Treasurer and Andrew Lennon Deputy Treasurer be authorized to take appropriate action in the investment of school district funds during the 2022-23 school year.
I second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. May I have a motion for newspapers?
I move that for the purpose of advertising bids and other legal notices during the 2022-2023 school year, the Journal News is the newspaper of record, the Examiner, or the New York Times be designated.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. May I have a motion for petty cash?
I move that petty cash accounts in accordance with policy be approved for the 2022-2023 school year as follows. Petty cash, superintendent's office $100, Douglas G. Grafflin Elementary School $100, Roaring Brook Elementary School $100, West Orchard Elementary School $100, Horace Greeley High School $100, Robert E. Bell Middle School $100, Seven Bridges Middle School $100.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. May I have a motion for treasurer's bond?
I move that the treasurer's bond in the amount of $100,000 as executed by NYSR be approved as to form and sufficiency for the 2022-23 school year.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. May I have a motion for data protection officer?
I move to appoint Joshua Colwell Block as Data Protection Officer for the 2022-23 school year.
I second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Nicely done, everyone. So, now that we have all of those motions, I think we move on to item number four. Reorganize, what? That was item number four. What? Where are we? Information Business Fair's President's Report. Obviously, I just became president a nanosecond ago, so I just want to say for this meeting as we head into the summer, first of all, I want to thank Hillary for being such a wonderful board president this past year. Really amazing job, and Hillary always led with her intelligence and her thoughtfulness and her sense of humor, and it was very much appreciated. I really want to welcome Ryan to the board table up here, and we're thrilled that you're joining us this year. I'm very happy to be working alongside Warren. It's like, we like to say, we're not old, but we're the elder statesmen here, so we are looking forward to working together this year. And I really want to say a big thank you and just a couple of quick things to our administrative team. It was, it's been a very long couple of years, and a lot of changes have taken place, and I'm very much looking forward to them getting some rejuvenation over the summer, as we are for everybody out there who may or may not be watching tonight. But we were fortunate enough, which we are every year around this time, to be a part of the administrative retreat with our very talented administrators. And so we have spent the last two days here really working on all things that make us the school district that we are and ways to make ourselves better. But I am very thankful because I think all of us here at this board table agree that we have administrators who are really special and talented, and it's nice for us to spend this time together. We have worked on our equity work with Insight, that was today. We've also had book groups developed, you know, we all chose a book by an educational author, Michael Fulan, which my book is here. We all chose different books and discussed them in terms of how to lead well, how to lead in a time of change, and it's this exchange of ideas and perspectives that helps us become an even better school district than the one that I think we are. So, we look forward to a really productive school year, and I hope that all of us focus on what brings us here, which is our desire to educate our students in the most well-rounded way possible. I know the superintendent will talk about some things that we are working on. We are always working on things over the summer, from planning to facilities, while you're, everyone's gone, there's always work to be done here. But I also wish everyone a very restful and rejuvenating summer break. Our administrators certainly deserve it, I know how hard they work, we're very blessed to have them, and we're looking forward to a really good summer for everyone and a really great school year. Now, that's all I have to say for tonight, other than to talk about some committee appointments. We have certain committees that some of you are or may not be aware of, but that we change up our assignments every year. This year, our assignments will be posted on the website, but I'm going to pull them up and let you know what they are for now, if you give me a second. And we're also going to have opportunities, which we started a couple of years ago, to have community members join us on certain committees in an advisory capacity. It's really beneficial for us to get this feedback and input from community members. So you will be getting something very shortly that will inform you on what these positions are, how you can apply for them, and how you can join us to just make things run smoothly, bring new ideas to the table, and assist us in the work we do every day, and we would really, really appreciate it for the, anyone who wants to apply. We've had some people do that, there are two-year terms, but again, you will be getting an email that will explain what the different committee positions are and how you can join us in this work. But for now, just so you know, that all of us are members of the audit committee and will stay on that for the year. Our communications committee will be myself and Kaylee. Policy committee will be Hillary and Ryan. Facilities will be Warren and Kaylee. Health and safety will be Warren and Hillary. The cares committee will be myself and Ryan. The green committee will be Hillary. Wellness will be Ryan. And then we have certain liaisons, and in that capacity for the Westchester-Putnam School Board Association, that will be Hillary. I will be with the PTA. Sports boosters will be Kaylee. CSF will be Warren, and Horace Greeley Scholarship Fund will be me. So, all of this information will be on the website, and again, you can look at your emails for opportunities to join committees and, and the application process we would like to have done, and I don't know, of course, you knew he was going to mention this, we want to have this done throughout the summer so that you can really join us when school starts up again in the fall. And that's it. Thank you, Jane. Okay, so, can I have a motion for item 5.1.1, which are the 2022 through 2023 Board Committee and Liaison Assignments, which I just read out?
I move.
Any questions, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And now onto the superintendent's report. Okay.
Right, so, I want to begin on behalf of the administration, welcoming Ryan to the board table. We're really looking forward to working with you. Thank you for joining us these past two days in our retreat, and it's great to have a new member of the team who's permanent, so we're happy to have you, and we look forward to partnering with you along the way here for our kids. So I have a few slides that I'd like to provide, an update based on some issues that we've discussed at the, at the past few meetings. So as you know, we have created a, an RFP or a advertisement for sale of the Button Hook property, and we placed this not only on the newspaper but in the, on our homepage so people can access it readily, and we've also sent it to individuals that have expressed interest in the property. So, the deadline for submission is, is from now until the end of August, and then the board will be able to review submissions and decide what our next steps will be in terms of how we're going to handle moving forward with this, with this property. Just wanted to provide a CCW update. Towards the end of the school year, we had many parents reach out requesting that the district offer additional space to CCW. I did meet with their owner, and I offered additional space in our buildings, and she has requested in writing an additional room in Roaring Brook, which we are happily able to provide. I shared that at any point in the summer if they'd like us to consider additional adjustments because they're able to staff more spaces in either West Orchard or Grafflin, just to let me know, and we'll make accommodations for our families. On the agenda tonight, there's an emergency resolution at the end of June. We were doing work on one of our bridges at Greeley that connects two of our buildings together, and we uncovered a problem, so we had to close the bridge and had a structural engineer come out who evaluated the path, the walking path, and determined that it was, it needed to be repaired before it could be reopened, so there's a safety resolution that allows us to do that work immediately so we can be prepared for when school opens in September. The board had visited the site this afternoon, and so I just wanted to share with the community what the concerns were around that bridge that needed to be remedied immediately. And so you'll, you'll see that we're asking you to act on that tonight so that Andrew and Joe Gromano can work with our, our liaison to help start construction as soon as possible. Okay, so at the last meeting, we talked about having the district conduct another safety and security analysis of our six buildings, and so after that meeting, we had had various conversations with each other, with some members of our community who have reached out that have a level of expertise that's beyond our own, and with our, with our own security contracts and personnel that support us and have supported us over the past few years. And we decided to recommend to the board that we create an RFP to solicit different entities who have an expertise maybe beyond our local BOCs or local agencies who normally would give us feedback on our protocols, our procedures, and our facilities. And so in the next few days, we'll be sending that RFP out and placing it on our, on our website to solicit bids for work, and with an endpoint at the conclusion of July so the board could interview potential firms to conduct this work for us, starting in August. So I just wanted to share with you where we were in that process, and the board has a copy of the draft RFP that will finalize by Monday, and then we'll have that go through our process, which will include sent, putting it on our website, placing it in the newspaper, but we'll also share it with some potential interested agencies. Any questions about that? Yes, Hillary?
I know we did one of these in the past.
What was the general, once a vendor to perform the audit is chosen, what is our estimated timeframe of the actual audit?
Yeah, usually, I mean, last time that we did this, it was within a, within a month. They had come onsite. It was pretty quick, it was pretty quick. So it's, so we can ask those questions when we engage in the interview process. All right, and so I just wanted Adam to provide an update for you on algebra for next year, based on the process that we have undertaken with our families to determine what course selection would look like next year. So I'm going to turn this over to him.
Great. Thank you, Christine. So I have a few updates and some additional data to share since, since our last meeting. So the first thing, I wanted to share the timeline, and I've added some things to this. And just as a reminder, on the 8th of June, we made a final recommendation to the Board of Education to potentially offer the three different courses, the Extended, the Algebra 8, and the Enriched, ultimately letting parents choose which of those courses they'd enroll their child in. We said we'd make recommendations for students with regard to the Algebra 8 course or the Enriched Algebra course, but we wouldn't be recommending students into the Extended course, and we talked a little bit about that at the time. On the 16th, we hosted, Josh Kowal Block and I hosted a parent webinar and discussed the choices. And then on the 17th, we sent out a letter to our seventh-grade parents with regard to teacher, they included teacher recommendations for students, they included a link to the webinar, so if parents missed it, then we recorded it so they could watch it or watch it over if they wanted to. And then it had a form, so the letter basically said, this is our recommendation for your child. If you'd like to override that recommendation and place your child in one of the other options, you can do that using this form. And it had a deadline to the form, which you can see there is the 29th. So on the 22nd, we presented the algebra regions to the board. The 24th was our last day for faculty, so we shared that with parents, so they knew that if they wanted to have a discussion with the teacher, they had to do that before the 24th, before they made that final decision. And then, 7/5, we sent a letter to a handful of parents who had chosen the Extended Algebra. And I'll share some data with you and talk a little bit more about that letter in just a minute. And we will be reaching out to all the parents who chose Extended Algebra. There was a small number, which I'll share in just a minute here. So this slide shows our, our data with regard to what we had originally recommended. You can see in the first two columns, those were the teacher recommendations that were made. And then once we sent that form, that form has now closed. So these are final numbers on the right side with regard to the different courses, Extended Algebra, Algebra 8, and Enriched Algebra. And you can see the two different schools. We did say and shared with the community and the board that we needed a minimum of 10 was going to be our cutoff for students with regard to a number of students to be able to offer that course. So that is the data that we have right now, so we won't be offering the Extended Algebra course. And those are the eight parents that we'll make sure we reach out to. They've all been notified already. We sent a letter on Tuesday to them via email, and our middle school building admins will be reaching out with regard to supports available to all students in those courses to ensure their success as they are there. I do have a slide, this is the, sorry, go ahead.
So we had no teacher recommendations for any student who they thought would be better off not going into an Algebra 8 class?
That's right. We had shared here that we wouldn't be recommending that Extended Algebra, that we think that we can meet all students' needs in the Algebra 8. And we had shared that data with the board with regard to our students that were in that lowest quartile and that lowest decile, and why we thought, based on the growth scores that we had of the students, that were the ones that struggled the most in math, they grew a significant amount, more so than they even grew in the eighth-grade math course when we offered it. So we believe we can meet the needs of those students in that Algebra 8 course, and that's why we didn't recommend the Extended Algebra for any of our students.
So just to, I mean, just to clarify, and I think that, you know, I know that a lot of parents had expressed concern about their kids in math classes. And, and I know we've told the parents too, that all this information is on the website in case that there was any confusion about what it is, but that you have tailored this math program at various stages, so that it, that everyone should be able to take the eighth-grade math program as it is, but you wanted to give parents who were concerned about this and really felt that their child was struggling, an option if they, if they really felt that their child could not do well, but that those numbers did not amount to enough to run a class.
That's right.
Right, we, we felt like we had representation in the meeting that there were swells of parents that felt like they didn't want their children in algebra.
Right.
So we wanted to have that information, and, and when we were making that decision, and quite frankly, we're in a position where that, that did not pan out. And so the way that we're structured next year, I think, is the best structure that we could have in place based on the feedback that we received, and is right in line with how our teachers recommended us move forward, particularly at the high school. So I, I'm, what I, what I think is important is to note the amount of communication that went out, and the number of conversations that Josh and Adam had with families to provide clarity and to provide support around making these decisions, because at the end of the day, we're presenting you the information that parents ultimately elected to select. Wasn't our selection for them.
Right.
In this case. And so this is where we are. So I, I feel good moving forward, and we'll support those eight families in, in a way that they feel like they need us to, as we transition to school from seventh-grade math to algebra.
Yeah, no, I just have, this is the same data that you saw in the previous slide. I just wanted to show a graphical representation, if, if that would be helpful. It just, it combines the two middle schools, so it's not broken out by middle school, but instead combines the two. The blue bar showed the teacher recommendation, and as we anticipated, you see that shift in the red bar. So, so basically, the, the flux based on parent choice was towards that Enriched Algebra. You see the growth in that red bar on the right side, and the decrease in the red bar in that Algebra 8. So the majority of students will be in the Enriched Algebra next year, and you can just see how that breaks down based on this, this chart. And as we said, there, we won't run that Extended Algebra with a total of eight students in it.
Adam, I wanted to ask one question about that. On the Enriched, and, and again, I've been playing a little bit of catch-up, remind me about the supports available at the Enriched level, since we have some parents who are opting to go higher than what you all are suggesting?
Yeah, so we have a STEAM teacher in each building who has the ability to push in, into the classrooms to provide some additional support. The, the Enriched students, you know, we will have some flexibility if students enroll in Enriched and then find that that might not be the best fit, and they need to drop down into Algebra. That could get complicated in terms of juggling the rest of the classes, depending on the class sizes and how many students move. This will be easier to predict in future years, once we get a sense of, you know, we can kind of, in, in the high school, for example, they have a sense of how many students might drop a course and move into a different course, but because this is a new program and new courses, in this arrangement, we don't really have a good sense of how many of those students will stay in Enriched and how many might drop down. But there, we will provide that flexibility to the extent that we can, but it could get challenging if we have a lot of students that have to move, and then we've got to figure out class sizes, so that there could be potential limitations in that, depending on students moving.
And then, would you say that it's fair to assume that since we're moving, we're separating into two tracks, that, that teachers feel better about the mainstream Algebra 8, because it will be a narrower band of ability than what we were doing this past year?
That's right. They won't, they won't have to differentiate to that larger, that larger swath, so that the idea there is that they can slow down, they don't have to provide that, you know, potential, like real enrichment to that upper end of students that need that extra challenge, and then can then, you know, shift some of that time and attention, resources, et cetera, to the extra support in that Algebra 8 class.
Great, thank you, Adam.
That should be our last presentation on algebra. I know we've been talking about that every, every meeting for the past, I think, seven. So what we'll, we'll do, when we revisit this again, I'll probably be at the end of the first quarter, and we'll talk about how kids are, are doing in that class, and provide a, a progress update for you, unless you are hearing feedback, and we need to do that sooner, just let us know. And so I just wanted to end by just updating you on the Horace Greeley High School principal search. We have a number of candidates coming to campus tomorrow, to meet with a very small committee, who will narrow them down to meet with larger groups of parents, students, and staff, probably not next week, but the following week. So I just wanted to continue to update you on where we are in that progress, with our goal of hopefully having someone to the board after you interview our final candidate for approval on the August 6 meeting. So that's our, that's our goal, if we're ready, and that's our target. So I just wanted to let the community know that that process is ongoing and, and well underway. And then I, I just wanted to share, you know, some key dates. We don't have a lot going on in July, and, and then August is right around the corner. Oh, and so our next meeting is actually August 9th, and that's when hopefully we'll be introducing our new high school principal and new APTO. And I hope everyone has a wonderful summer, and we're open Monday through Thursday from 7:30 to 3:30. So if anyone needs support from us, we're certainly available, but you can also email us, and we, all the administrators check their email frequently, and we'll get back to you. So, thank you, and again, have a great summer, everybody.
So I have two things, Christine.
Yep.
One is, thank you. This is the first time we haven't had a COVID update, and I don't know how wrong.
I'm thanking myself for that.
And the second is, I received a, a call from a parent, I don't know, since summer, so things are not as, as, as quick. But a few months ago, we had a presentation, I think by Josh Block, in the, in the Counseling Department, that we were moving from Naviance to SCORE. Because SCORE was supposed to provide better access to data for our counselors and the colleges and our, our students, and that that data would be migrated by July 1st, and apparently, it's not migrated yet.
Right, I asked Josh that question, and so I can ask him to provide further information, but he had shared with me that the migration should take place in November, because that's when Naviance was uploaded with information previously, but I can, maybe, maybe there's more information that is missing from that. I asked him this afternoon.
In the presentation, they said we have it up by July 1st, so that, I guess the data would be on both sides, so the, that the staff and students could start using it.
Well, the data that, it's hard without talking directly to the parent to see exactly what they're asking for, but the data that is used in the college search process in Naviance is uploaded in November, so I, I'm not really sure what the, maybe the parent can reach out to me, or Josh, or to Andrew, so I can understand exactly.
I guess the SCORE system was, I guess they were supposed to run both systems in parallel.
Right.
And apparently, the data's not in SCORE yet, so, and that that was supposed to be the system we were going with.
Yeah, I, I'm having, I'm having a hard time answering the question, because according to Josh, all data uploads occur in November on both systems. But you're telling me that the parent is sharing with you that the data upload should have occurred in July. So I really, I think the best thing is for the parent to either call me or Josh, because we're both working.
Because I guess, as I remember the presentation also, that they were supposed to run the systems in parallel for a while.
Right. I guess if, like, I'd be curious to, and I think maybe we can encourage that parent, because if everything's uploaded in November when applications go out, then I'm wondering if, what, I would assume a migration would take place sooner than that, but obviously, we, maybe we just need some more nuanced information about how that's really going to work.
Well, I think, I think the idea was that the data would be moved to SCORE, so, so we could use, so the guidance counselors.
So both can be used for this fall's process.
For the fall's process, correct. And then it'll eventually be uploaded in November.
So I guess, like, the, is the parent, is the, so the seniors are in SCORE? The juniors are uploaded in November, so is the, is the parent a junior parent?
Senior parent.
Or senior parent? So there must, so.
The seniors would have to be in, if I had.
Josh confirmed with me today that the seniors are in SCORE, so maybe they can reach out to Josh, maybe they need help.
Okay.
Using the system. Or, or Andrew, because we're, we're, we're in, because we're 12 months. If they're reaching out to the guidance counselor, they may not be in right now.
So all the seniors should be in SCORE.
Seniors should be in, and juniors go in in November.
Okay.
Yeah.
This was a senior parent, so.
Oh, so, yeah. Okay.
I'll, I'll reach back to them, ask them to talk to Josh.
Yeah, Josh, because Josh is in.
Okay.
Like, he's in. I don't know when their guidance counselor, they have different schedules in the summer.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Okay. All right, that's it, yeah.
Okay. This is our public comment period. We always welcome public comments, and with, in respect for each other's time, we ask that you eliminate comments to three minutes, and board members can always be contacted via email or phone. After the public comment period has been completed, board members may have a discussion among themselves regarding comments presented. Would anyone like to make a comment? I see someone at the microphone. Hello?
Yes, good evening. Hi, my name is Barrett Flom, and I had comments about two things that were discussed tonight with Superintendent's Report. The first was with respect to the algebra slides. The slides indicate that the Extended Algebra class, there were zero teacher recommendations, which seemed somewhat inconsistent, or perhaps a little misleading, based on the information that we got at the last board meeting. My understanding was that the teachers could not recommend the Extended Algebra. I mean, so I just don't want people to be under the assumption that teachers don't actually believe that students should be taking the Extended Algebra, but instead that the teachers were not allowed to recommend that. That's my first comment. And then the second one is with respect to CCW and the update on that. There's a group of concerned parents, and we're very happy that Dr. Ackerman has worked with the owner of CCW to get extended, extended space. And it's great that Roaring Brook is going to have that. However, we want to make sure that the board is aware that this is a problem that's bigger than just Roaring Brook, and there's a waiting list for also Grafflin, as well as West Orchard, not just Roaring Brook. Obviously, you guys do not control the hiring and the staffing that's available for CCW, but that's why the parents are working to support CCW to get what they need, in addition to working with local stakeholders to work on other options that may be necessary to meet the needs of the students in the district. But, thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone have any comments or anything?
No.
Okay, thank you very much. Item 6, approvals and ratifications. May I have a motion for 6.1, to approve the minutes of the June 22, 2022 board meeting? Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item 7.
I recommend 7.1 instructional as presented.
I move that we accept the Superintendent's recommendation for item 7.1.
I'll second 7.1. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I recommend, hold on, let me, I know a lot of pages. 7.2, non-instructional as presented.
I move that we accept the Superintendent's recommendation for item 7.2.
I second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That brings us to item 8, recommended action, which this is our consent agenda. The board uses the consent agenda to make more effective use of its time by adopting in a single motion items that cover relatively routine matters. Any member of the board who wishes to discuss individually a particular piece of business can indicate that item and remove it from the consent agenda, and I will ask at this time, this, this consent agenda tonight, it's items 8.1 through, let me just check the numbers, 8.13. These are routine contracts within the district, many of them with our attorneys, with our auditor, with our claims auditor, and it also involves the emergency repair that was discussed earlier about the bridge at Greeley, and several other contractual items. Does anyone choose to take any item out of tonight's consent agenda? Nope? Then I will move to, move items 8.1 through 8.13. Can I have a second?
I move.
Second, Warren. Any discussion, questions, comments? All in favor?
I have a question.
Oh.
Ryan, you?
No, no.
Go ahead.
8.5, thank you very much. That's for the board.
What?
I'm sure we'll be happy about, that 8.5 is there. There should be no reason why we shouldn't.
So DNO, indemnifying.
Yes, yes, yes. We are very happy that that's there, to indemnify us against any actions. I just wanted to say, and you wanted to just comment that.
That's it.
Okay, okay. We, we agree with you, Warren. All right, all in favor of the consent agenda?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Onto item 9.1. This is an agreement for services for, with Christopher Emden for the 2022-2023 school year. We are acknowledging an agreement entered into with, between Christopher Emden pursuant to Board Policy 6085. Can I have a motion for item 9.1?
I move the next one.
Second.
Any questions or comments? I will just comment that we heard him speak at the, am I correct, the Community Day, and I thought he was excellent, so I'm very glad that he will be back with us.
Oh, he's coming for opening day.
Yeah. I think, I thought he did a terrific job, and we've gotten some very good feedback, and I think he's wonderful, so thank you for bringing him back. All in favor of 9.1?
Aye.
Nothing under facilities or financials? Item 12.1?
Facilities.
What? Oh, go ahead.
We, we spoke about the bridge, and during the summer, we do a lot of work, so the custodians go through all the buildings, you know, and get them ready for the fall. If anything comes up, we'll make sure the board understands what's going on, so we don't, so we don't, we have no issues.
Right, thanks, yes, that's, absolutely. The work is never done. If anyone drives through any of our campuses throughout the summer, they will see a lot of work going on, so that our buildings are in tip-top shape for the fall. Thank you, Warren. Item 12.1, this, and I'd like a motion for the annual affirmation of all policies previously adopted by the board.
I move 12.1.
I second.
Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Notice of future meetings. Our next meeting is Tuesday, August 9th, at 7:30 PM here in the Greeley Auditorium. This is our annual tax warrant meeting. And then our meeting following that is opening day, Wednesday, August 31st, 10:30 AM here